The dedication of your community groups through your general plan advisory committee and through staff's dedication to this project as well. So we're on time, we're on schedule, and we are excited to be here tonight. As part of our online, um, online presence, we began by engaging your community through a dedicated project website. I'm sure many of you have had the opportunity to check that out, but it basically is a landing page where we've been able to really connect with the community, share surveys, receive input, and share our draft documents as they've been prepared. Early in the process, we conducted three visioning workshops focused on various important topics to the general plan, including setting your vision and values, describing land use and housing, and looking specifically at transportation and mobility. We also hosted pop-up events at two of your community, community events at Bunny Blast and at National Night Out. We hosted an online vision and value survey, really excited to get over 800 responses to that, and then also have met with your general plan advisory committee 11 times over the past year. We've been in front of your city council every quarter to provide briefings on our work products, facilitated stakeholder interviews and briefings with important community groups and business, business members, developed all of this and summarized it into a public engagement summary report that's been provided to you and also available online. And then most recently, when we presented the draft policy document and draft environmental impact report, we shared that with the community at two open houses in early November. So based on all of this input that we received and really just valuable insights into where the community wanted to head over the next 20 years, developed a draft vision statement that was presented to the general plan advisory committee, reviewed and edited by them, and then ultimately presented and approved by your city council in January of this year. That vision statement is supported by eight guiding principles, which really set the stage for the key components of how we address the future of Lake Forest in your policy document. Those include creating a sense of place, promoting your quality of life, addressing your parks, recreation, and natural open space, developing vibrant commercial centers, supporting business opportunities, improving mobility in the city and the region, strengthening local and regional partnerships, and focusing on preparing for the future of all sorts of technology and unknowns. In addition to the vision statement, the team's also prepared a very detailed existing conditions report and issues and challenges report, and we'll talk a little bit more about those as we go through the presentation. So there are a number of state requirements that cities must consider as they go through updating their general plan, and this is really a moving target. We get new updates and new requirements that cities are required to consider, um, it seems like on a daily basis, but I'm going to share some of the key components with you tonight to let you know how the Lake Forest General Plan addressed some of these key issues. So you are responsible for addressing these state requirements. Some of the recent bills that really impacted the way we thought about the general plan here in your community talked about things like housing, environmental justice, transportation, and climate change. And again, if you were to choose not to address these topics, you might impact your ability to access state, federal, and grant funding, and then ultimately put the city at some legal jeopardy. So we want to just assure you that we have taken into consideration these state mandates, and they are reflected in your draft documents. All right, the first one I'm going to talk about is your state regional housing needs assessment, or your RENA. So I'm sure this is not the first time that you've had the pleasure of hearing about it, but the state of California mandates that every city must plan for their fair share of the regional housing need. And again, that is often referred to as your RENA. The city of Lake Forest has received an allocation of a draft RENA of 3,163 units for an eight-year planning period beginning in 2021 and ending in 2029. Your housing element is required to be updated every eight years. So if you think about the lifespan of your general plan, you can consider that you'll have to update your housing element three times within that 20 to 25-year planning period. So how did we address this as part of your general plan? Certainly from the very beginning, working with your community and with your GPAC to carefully plan for where and how future growth will be accommodated in light of your housing requirements, but also reflecting local issues and priorities, has been really a cornerstone of this approach. Senate Bill 1000 requires cities and counties across California to consider the role of environmental justice. It specifically identifies the need to prepare goals and policies related to this topic if a city has disadvantaged communities or low-income communities that are disproportionately affected by environmental pollution or other hazards within your planning area. Although Lake Forest does not have either of these types of communities, and in, um, just recognition of the importance of planning for equitable growth and development for people of all ages, backgrounds, and incomes, the city has prepared a new health and wellness element that addresses the topics of active living, healthy lifestyles, and community building that really continue to reflect the spirit and priorities of environmental One of the new requirements related to transportation has been the need for all cities to consider the role of complete streets. So complete streets basically says that your local roads and streets must meet the needs of all users of all ages and abilities, including bicyclists, pedestrians, transit riders, and motorists. It doesn't mean that every street needs to accommodate all users, it means that your network needs to accommodate all users. So your streets can and will look different depending on their context, the community preferences we received, the needs of its users, what's happening in its land use context, and the ultimate function of that roadway. Your mobility element certainly takes this into account, has a special topic dedicated to addressing the needs of complete streets, and as part of our traffic study, considered these needs as well. And the last state require, second to last state requirement I'm going to talk about, the second one related to transportation is related to Senate Bill 743. In this Senate bill, the state of California has eliminated automobile level of service, commonly referred to as LOS, as an indicator of transportation impacts under the California Environmental Quality Act. Instead, the state requires that you consider vehicle miles traveled as the appropriate metric for SEQA impacts in that analysis. The city is required to comply with this requirement by July of 2020, but you do have the option to comply early, uh, and that is the case that has occurred here in the general plan update in order to maximize the longevity and usefulness of your draft environmental impact report for your general plan. With that said, although LOS is no longer considered in your environmental impact report, jurisdictions can consider LOS as an important part of your policy approach. So in your general plan, while your EIR considers the impacts to VMT, your general plan policy document continues to recognize the role of level of service in Lake Forest. All right, and the last state requirement I'll share tonight is related to Senate Bill 379, talking specifically about climate change and resiliency planning. This requires that your safety element address locally, locally applicable climate change and adaptation resiliency planning strategies, and also allows you to defer the specifics of that approach to a local hazard mitigation plan that could include the required goals and policies to address Senate Bill 379. In your general plan, we have identified and explored appropriate goals and policies relevant to local issues related to climate change and resiliency planning, but we have also included as an action item, the city's, uh, direction to prepare a local hazard mitigation plan that allows you to really dive into the details and address these, uh, outside of the general plan framework, much like you address capital improvements in your CIP or economic development strategies in your economic development action plan. All right, so that brings us back through a bunch of the research. So we're here, uh, going to kind of shift gears and talk a little bit about development of our benchmark plan, which really serves as, again, the foundation of our policy document, and ultimately the project that's evaluated in the EIR in front of you tonight. So it's a, there's a lot that goes into thinking about what this project looks like and how we came up with the benchmark plan. So the graphic on the screen kind of provides you a high-level overview of what went into considering, what we considered as we developed that benchmark plan. So we've got our state mandates, we just walked through those topics related to housing, transportation, environmental justice, and climate change. We also looked back at your existing conditions report, your issues and opportunities report, and thought about the issues and opportunities facing Lake Forest, such as the goal to preserve your existing neighborhoods coupled with economic development objectives and potential environmental impacts. And then ultimately weighed that against the public feedback we'd been receiving, which really included a desire for new mixed-use activity centers and to create a special sense of place in Lake Forest, particular issues related to traffic and mobility, and then also the desire for the city to remain fiscally sustainable. So we've got a lot of different things at play that all funnel into the way that we approach development of that benchmark plan. So the first step we took was really developing a series of land use planning framework objectives, which really basically said, as we start to make decisions about what the future land plan or benchmark plan for Lake Forest might look like, what are the things that we value or hold true as we go through this process? And we always want to relate back to these, uh, these framework objectives to make sure that the decisions we're making are in line. So we developed a series of eight objectives. The first was to protect, preserve, and enhance the city's existing residential neighborhoods, to support your local businesses and industries, strengthen the city's image and identity, accommodate future growth in strategic locations, particularly near major roadways and transportation facilities, allow for the development of thriving mixed-use activity centers where new housing can be located near desirable goods, services, and jobs, expand the range of attainable housing choices to allow for more people to live and work in Lake Forest, expand the local economy by planning for emerging technologies and industries and new employment opportunities, and create a fiscally sustainable land use plan with balanced residential and non-residential development. So in light of these, uh, objectives and the public feedback that we received, we identified five key focus areas that we felt warranted some special land use attention through this process. Those five areas comprise approximately 615 total acres throughout the city, which is a little less than 6% of your total area, and they're focused along El Toro Road, Lake Forest Drive, Foothill Ranch Town Center, around your new civic center, and in the light industrial rail corridor. So in order to achieve the objectives that we identified for our land use planning priorities, we wanted to define some new possible land use designations that may apply in some of these key focus areas, and they really relate to the idea of allowing for a mixture of uses at a variety of densities and intensities, many of which support the city's ability to accommodate its RENA. The intent is to allow for the transition of land uses over time based on market conditions to respond to the city's economic development priorities. Certainly, the city is not requiring or mandating any change in these areas, but these new mixed-use categories generally broaden the range of uses envisioned for certain areas in order to respond to those market changes. The new designations include a variety of mixed-use choices, which allow for a mixture of commercial and residential uses at densities between 32 and 60 dwelling units per acre. They can occur in both vertical and horizontal configurations, a new mixed-use office category, particularly in support of your emerging hospitality industry, a new urban industrial choices which allow for a mixture of industrial and residential uses at densities between 25 and 43 dwelling units per acre. So the general plan advisory committee and the city council reviewed a robust land use themes report, and that themes report really combined the application of these new designations to the focus areas that were identified for special focused attention, and basically developed a series of options or themes on how the city might be able to address its housing, economic development priorities, and respond to those, um, in a thoughtful way over the next 20 years. And the city council, uh, received the direction provided by the general plan advisory committee, and then provided staff and the consultant team with specific direction on the land use types at specific densities and intensities to study as part of this benchmark plan or the land use plan. Again, that benchmark plan is the project that's evaluated in your draft environmental impact report, and will be presented, um, more thoroughly to you tonight. I'll go through some of the specific impacts. We were able to memorialize the direction that the city council provided as part of this, uh, this process. This package is available online and, uh, also in your staff report. It focuses and just provides that specific level of information for each of those five focus areas. And again, the areas of change focused, uh, primarily in those five focus areas, less than 6% of the total city, and you can see on the screen kind of how that relates and plays out on the full, uh, context of your entire land use plan. All right, so for some of the numbers, so lots of different ways to slice and dice this, but ultimately, some of the key things we want to look at when we're considering how these land use plans play out, we look at how many type, how many residential units are allowed, how that might translate into population, the amount of non-residential development allowed, and how that might translate into jobs, and then ultimately to kind of get a perspective, how does that jobs and housing balance work? So we consider a number of factors when we think about what the role of the benchmark plan is in dedic, in dictating the future potential growth of Lake Forest. We look at your existing on-the-ground conditions, so this is what is actually built out there in the community today. We also look at the potential build-out of your current general plan. So you have an adopted general plan right now. It allows for growth and development in the community at various densities and intensities, and then comparing that against those development potentials allowed under your benchmark plan. So as you can see, the, in, as detailed in your staff report as well, your current general plan provides some development potential over your existing conditions. What that means is that essentially, not every parcel in your community over time has built out at the maximum density or intensity allowed under your current general plan. For a variety of reasons, those parcels have developed at densities lower than the maximum, and we can expect a similar pattern of development as we move forward with future growth under the benchmark plan designations. But the benchmark plan envisions allowing an additional 14,600 units over your current plan, translating into approximately 43,000 people, an additional 1.65 million square feet over development allowed under your current plan, translating into approximately 4,000 more jobs. The way that the ratio is affected in terms of jobs per housing unit is that you go from having, um, you go to a more balanced ratio of approximately 1.02 from 1.31, meaning that you are more in line with having more ability for jobs and housing to be closer together in Lake Forest. So I want to stress that the general plan and EIR are required to look at the maximum potential build-out that is reasonable under your land use map or your benchmark plan. But I think we all know that there are a number of practical factors which would limit this development potential, and that is certainly reflected in the growth pattern of your community since your current general plan. Things like the shape of the parcel or the size of the parcel, your development standards, which set your, your, your setbacks and parking requirements and landscaping requirements, uh, private CCNRs and long-term leases, and just ultimately the financial feasibility of development, all have the opportunity to impact the amount of development that actually occurs. So certainly, development is expected at densities and intensities lower than the maximum analyzed, but we are required to consider it and disclose it as part of this process. Future projects are most certainly required to submit project-specific development applications, and again, this plan looks 20, 25 years in the future. New growth is not expected to occur overnight, it will occur gradually over time based on those market conditions. All right, so diving into our draft general plan policy document. Your policy document used to be, uh, several hundred pages long, maybe some of you have opened it up and perused it over time, but we have presented to you a draft policy document for the Lake Forest General Plan 2040, really that is streamlined and focused on providing a clear, concise, and longstanding policy direction while maintaining a separate existing conditions report that provides that background detail. So the general plan policy document lasts 20-plus years, it should provide that timeless direction to allow your decision-makers and your community to know the path forward over, over that time. Lake Forest is in a unique position as a primarily contract city. A lot of our goals and policies recognize and identify the responsible agencies that work with the city to implement a lot of your key services and programs. The general plan also balances the needs of your residents along with your business community, and is designed to be flexible so that the city can be open to innovation and changes in the marketplace and best practice without having to go through cumbersome general plan amendments. And then ultimately, one of the roles that the city accepts through this process is its obligation to educate and inform the public on key issues and opportunities. Your general plan is required to address a number of topics, but you have ultimate flexibility in the way that the elements are organized. So for your general plan update, we have a land use and design element, a mobility element that addresses transportation, economic development, recreation and resources, public safety, public facilities, and health and wellness. Each element presents a series of goals, policies, and actions that provide the guidance related to that topic area. So the goal is your affirmative statement that describes a future condition of where the city wants to go in relation to a particular topic. The policies usually start with an action or a verb that really guides the level of decision-making and specifies an intended level of commitment that the city wants to make in implementing that goal, and then also a series of actions which really dictate the implementation process for achieving your vision. On the screen is just an example of the land use and design element, so the cover page gives you a preview of the topics addressed within that chapter, and then you can see that there is a topic area assigned to a goal number, a goal, a series of policies, and a series of actions which support that topic. All right, we're on our last, we're on our last subsection. All right, we're going to talk about the environmental impact report now. So your EIR, your EIR is an informational document that describes the environmental effects of implementing the project. So again, the project in front of you tonight is the benchmark plan and the draft policy document. It's a disclosure document and really a forum, the environmental processes a forum for public participation in, uh, the review of potential impacts of implementation of this project. So the EIR is unbiased, it doesn't advocate for or against the project, it doesn't approve or, uh, you know, approve this project or any subsequent project, and it's certainly not a blink in approval for future projects that are consistent with the general plan. Although it does provide guidance and overall information that future projects can use as they pursue the, uh, analysis of potential impacts of projects in the future. So again, no specific development applications are being considered as part of this general plan EIR, and the, uh, process is, uh, described on the following screen. So where are we in this process right now? We are kind of in the second orange bubble, which is the middle of the public review process of the draft environmental impact report. A notice of preparation of the EIR was released to the public on September 5th, 2019, and we held a public scoping meeting here at City Hall on September 24th. The city received four comment letters on that notice of preparation from the Orange County Transportation Authority, Caltrans, the Native American Heritage Commission, and the city of Laguna Beach. Following the notice of preparation, the team did prepare a comprehensive draft environmental impact report which addresses all required topics. You can see those listed on the screen, I will save you and not list all of them, but what's important to know is that your general plan EIR is comprehensive and again, addresses all required topics per the California Environmental Quality Act. One of the unique things about the Lake Forest General Plan is that your policy document was developed to be self-mitigating. What this means is that the policy document and the draft environmental impact report were prepared concurrently so that as potential impacts were identified, we were able to address them through the goals, policies, and actions in the policy document. So they go hand in hand, and this is a unique approach to developing a general plan and EIR because it really helps, um, create a policy document that is more clear, easy to understand, and provides the level of appropriate mitigation as part of the, uh, policy document, and makes sure that the city understands what's expected of them in order to, uh, preemptively address any potential impacts. However, in some cases, there were no additional feasible mitigation measures identified in order to address a topic to be less than significant as part of those potential impacts disclosed in the draft environmental impact report. As such, your draft EIR identifies significant environmental impacts related to the following areas, agricultural resources, cumulative ag resources, air quality, cumulative air quality wildfires as part of the hazard section, cumulative wildfires also as part of the hazard section, and irreversible effects. Your SEQA document is also required to, uh, analyze a range of reasonable alternatives to the proposed project, and these alternatives were specifically designed for Lake Forest in order to address public input received through the process regarding the draft benchmark The first alternative identified is the no project or current, current general plan alternative. This basically says that the city would not adopt the general plan update, and the current general plan would continue to be implemented as is. New growth, again, is allowed under your current general plan, primarily in existing residential areas that have not built out to their maximum densities. We would recommend to you to consider that your current general plan would be out of compliance with these state mandates we discussed, and that your current land use plan does not support your ability to accommodate your future RENA, let alone the three, the three cycles expected under this planning horizon. Alternative two is identified as the reduced mixed-growth alternative. This alternative continues to allow for new growth in those focus areas in mixed-use formats, but at densities and intensities lower than those considered in the benchmark plan. Specifically, it eliminates the mixed-use 60 designation and replaces those areas with mixed-use 43 or commercial. It increases the amount of urban industrial 25, specifically within the civic center and Lake Forest Drive corridor focus areas, and it reduces the overall amount of mixed-use development allowed along El Toro Road, focusing mixed-use only between I-5 and Rockfield And the last alternative, described as the high-density residential alternative, places more emphasis on identifying specific areas for dedicated residential uses, allowing for densities up to 43 deuse an acre. It also eliminates mixed-use 60 as a land use designation and designates those areas as either MU43 or high-density residential, both allowing densities up to 43 deuse an acre. It also eliminates the mixed-use 32 designation, those areas are also designated as MU43 or high-density residential, and it eliminates the urban industrial 43 designation, designating that area as high-density residential as well. This slide summarizes the comparison of the potential build-out associated with the alternatives against your current plan and against your benchmark plan. You can see that alternative two allows for growth of an additional 11,000 units over your current plan, 33,000 people, 1.2 your current plan, 33,000 people, 1.27 million square feet of non-residential development, and 2,700 jobs. Alternative three allows for an additional 14,300 units, 42,600 people, 1.24 million square feet non-residential development, and 3,200 jobs. And then we'd already discussed the potential implications of your benchmark plan. The draft environmental impact report was published on November 8 of this year. It's available online. Hard copies are available here at City Hall, and a notification was posted in the OC Register as well on November 14. There's a 45-day public review period associated with your draft EIR which will close on December 23. Public comments can be delivered in writing or via email to Gail Ackerman, and her contact information is provided on all of those venues as well. I don't expect you to read this, but on the end, I do have staff's recommended action. This is detailed in your staff report. So with that, I just want to see if Gail or Nikki have anything else they'd like to add to the presentation before I turn it back over to you and the commission.
No, I'd like to thank Amanda and Ben. That was a very thorough overview of a process that we've been involved in for the last two years. So thank you for your patience, and thank you for those who sat on the GPAC and spent many months and years working on the project as well.
Commission Secretary, do we have any other members of the public wishing to speak?
We have two speaker cards. Beverly Hough, followed by Rona Henry.
Good evening.
Welcome.
My name is Beverly Hough, and I'm a 40-year resident of Lake Forest. I was around in the beginning. I am here to advocate for permanent supportive housing for chronically homeless neighbors in our city. The last point in time homeless count in January of this year indicated the city has 36 sheltered persons and 76 unsheltered persons for a total of 112 people. This is unacceptable in Lake Forest. This is not a third-world country. Let's find a permanent solution. Standard practice in our current housing policy in the housing element for 2013 through 2021 is to encourage developers to provide affordable housing at least 15% of all new units. How are we doing on that? The Regional Housing Needs Assessment is an assessment process performed periodically by the Southern Californian Association of Governments as a way of assisting cities with their housing element and their general plan updates. As of last year, the progress report on our housing element implementation notes that between 2013 and 2018, Lake Forest has issued permits for 187 very-low and low-income units toward the goal of 1,097 units. We are woefully behind in serving Lake Forest residents of low and very-low income. Research tells us that permanent supportive housing is our best option to solve the chronically homeless problem long-term. The homeless folks are a small percentage of those that need affordable housing, but the problem of homelessness is increasing. The state is considering punitive measures to compel cities to deal with the rising need for affordable housing, including taking away cities' authority for residential development. I firmly believe in local control, but that comes with responsibilities to all of our residents. The draft comprehensive plan takes care of the zoning very well. It will allow for permanent supportive housing, potentially with 11,452 units. Surely, some of these units can be designated for permanent supportive housing for homeless neighbors. Next year's housing element update will need to take advantage of the zoning in this new comprehensive plan and require developers to set aside 15% of our new residential units for affordable housing. Finally, I urge the next step and set aside 125 units of all of those units zoned in the comprehensive plan to give the chronically homeless a chance for a new beginning. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next person?
Rona Henry.
Good evening. I am not a 40-year resident. I actually don't live here. However, I do shop here, I go to the gym here five days a week, and I go to church here. And I'm recently retired, and I have become very involved in the cause of homelessness, but in particular, I'm also interested in affordable housing for low-income folks. And this really struck home at Thanksgiving when one of our congregants came to our Thanksgiving dinner at church, and I learned that he was living in his car. He holds two jobs, but he can't afford to find housing in Lake Forest. And so that's where I come from. That's where it motivates me tonight. And what I'm interested in with the general plan is what do you anticipate your requirements for low-income, affordable housing, and in particular, supportive housing will be coming in the future? And have you already done, or do you have plans for an inclusionary housing feasibility study? This is something I recently learned about that the City of Santa Cruz did, and in the process of working with their development and businesses, they actually were able to adjust the policy to meet the needs of both the developers, but also to include affordable housing in a way that will work. And I'm wondering if the City of Lake Forest has any such plans. I think it would be great if I, next time I go to the Thanksgiving dinner, our congregant doesn't have to tell me that he's living in his car. Thank you.
Excuse me, can I get you to give your full name and address again, please?
Oh, sure. It's Rona Henry, and I live in Laguna Woods.
Thank you for coming. We appreciate you being here. Do we have any other?
That's all I have.
Do we have any written communication that we haven't received?
I have not received any.
Okay. We'll open it up to the commissioners.
I'm sorry, Chair. We do have a letter that's been placed on the dais. We do have a letter from Mr. Jeff Dill.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I remember seeing that. And that's in support of the project, so. Commissioners, we'll open it up to you for comments and questions.
Just had one question with regards to RENA, and it says that we have every city has to plan for their fair share of regional housing needs. How does this apply to unincorporated areas within, in our case, the county, but also like within the state? Is there any requirement that county areas that are unincorporated?
Yes.
Share the wealth, so to speak?
So yeah, the RENA trickles down from the state from the top, so the state will get a statewide, in the millions. They'll dole those out to the regional planning agencies. In this case, it's SCAG. And then all of the incorporated cities plus unincorporated county areas all receive RENA allocation. So unincorporated Orange County did receive RENA allocation. Theirs get a little more complicated because the state doesn't necessarily specify the sub-areas. Obviously, the counties cover large geographic areas, but outside of the incorporated cities, the county and the unincorporated portions has RENA allocation as well.
So it's not just the cities that are having to?
That's absolutely correct.
Share the thing that county?
They're doled out at the city and county level.
Okay, thank you.
So the only real exception is San Francisco, which has contiguous city-county boundaries, but all the rest of the 57 counties get RENA.
Thanks.
Do you have any questions? Go ahead.
So I don't know if this is for you, Amanda, or maybe Gail. Is there anything more that you can shed light on from our two speakers or two guests tonight that ask questions about low-income housing and what the city is doing?
Yes, I would like to add, I think we covered it more in our written staff report. The housing element is the only element of your general plan that has to be reviewed and approved by the state HCD. We are not updating the housing element as part of this general plan update. That's on a separate cycle, but as Amanda indicated, that starts in about six months, and we'll have until 2021 to complete the housing element. The city's policies on affordable housing, whether it's inclusionary, whether it's a goal and what that percentage number is, is something that will be covered in the housing element coming up.
Thank you, Gail.
Like I said, I'll jump in here. First, I want to thank Gail for having Commissioner Fuentes and myself sit on the Planning Advisory Committee for this. It really gave some insight as to where we are, where we're going, and what we can expect, and really, it was an interesting project in itself in that all aspects of our development were covered. There were 18 of us, so I'm surprised we came to consensus on the majority of the items, but we did. I actually took the time to read it front to back, and...
I was with her.
Yeah. I was reading it to her. I nodded off several times, I might add. But what I found interesting, and in a meeting we had the other day, there were some topics that ensued which added some light to the impact report, the draft impact report. And what I found most interesting in there was the housing, land use, traffic noise, and the services provisions that are in there that was looked at with the committee. Please spare me if I'm boring you with this, but the housing is what's driving this, in my opinion, and that comes down from the state, and we're sort of in a position we have to comply with that. And the document that we put together, I think you guys did an exceptional job in guiding us through that because it does address the items that we have, and also indicated a couple of things to me that one thing that we can definitely, I think, almost be assured that is going to occur, is the noise levels, in my opinion, will drop in the next 20 years. And that's because of the introduction of electrical vehicles. So even though traffic may increase, the noise is positive on that side, that definitely there's going to be an impact from that. The LOS change, going to miles traveled, to me indicates that density is the goal of the state. They're looking to increase density. How much density can we absorb within the document that we put together? I think we've done an adequate job in that. But what I found interesting in the EIR report, the draft EIR report, there will be a couple of things in the near future that the commission will have to address and counsel. This is, in my opinion, the services levels of both sewer and water. If there's anything that's going to limit the density that was in the community, it'll be those two items. We're at or near capacity in El Toro Water District, and the Irvine Water District still has potential for growth, which can be absorbed with what we're talking about. But when it comes time to address the next general plan, I think those two issues will be imminent in review of that document because it's going to dictate that we're at capacity. So there is a point in time where I think the density and the growth pattern of the community will have to be capped, and it won't be anything that we will be liable for. They'll either have to do a vast investment in both sewer and water provision in order to facilitate anything, any growth, or through our full capacity. Once again, these are just in my opinion. But I found this an interesting process. Those of you that don't know, I was involved with the first general plan. It was much thicker than this. I liked the document much better. I think the format of doing the document and the EIR consecutively or in unison adds credence to both documents because what you raise in one, you answer in the other. What you haven't answered in one, you present in the document itself. So I found it very interesting not to read, but to participate in the activity. Okay? The, I think the thing that I took away from this is, yes, there are, there are going to be some parameters that will be established in the next 20 years that will have to be looked at. But for now, I think what this document does is allow and permits us to do the growth that will be necessary and is expected. So I'm in total favor of it. I want to thank Jolene for sitting with me in those meetings. They were very interesting, very productive, and I think you guys did an exceptional job in leading us through that, so.
May I just add that it was really invaluable to have Dave Carter sit on that committee because he sat on the first one, and I'm not sure, but I was hearing that he's lobbying to be on the third general plan committee. Did everybody else hear that? Because I have the first nomination for that. He was truly invaluable.
Yeah, thank you, but I'll be as old as dirt by then, so I don't think that's going to happen.
I had a couple of questions. In our discussion when I met with you yesterday and during your presentation tonight, this issue with RENA changing all the time and with the other state mandates that are coming down that seem to be changing daily, how do you foresee that impacting the plan, say, in the next 30 days? Do you see another string of things coming from the state that could impact what's going on here?
So right now, the Southern Californian Association of Governments has developed and recommended to the State of California a particular methodology that results in Lake Forest in receiving RENA of approximately 3,200 units. That process is under review by the state and, at this time, is the recommended methodology from SCAG as it relates to its jurisdictional allocation. The State of California is going through the process of reviewing and confirming that methodology, and as of yet, we have no indication that that change would be made. However, that will be finalized, and your final distribution is not expected until summer of next year, at which time, of course, this general plan will hopefully be concluded. So with that said, all indications that we have from your regional agency and no indications from the State of California that they are looking to make any significant changes at this time. Of course, that process is ongoing, but is confirmed as of now.
So theoretically, nothing will happen in the next period of time that could impact it in a significant way?
Certainly not within the next 30 days. HCD's review is going to extend beyond that timeframe, and they will also have the opportunity to negotiate with Southern Californian Association of Governments regarding their allocation. However, that has already occurred once, and no significant changes were made to the allocation for this region through that process. So SCAG has already asked for a lower allocation, and that request was not approved.
Okay, thank you. In terms of the mixed use, we have, it's talked about in your plan. Can you elaborate a little bit more about where you see mixed use going in the future and how you've addressed that in the plan?
Yeah, absolutely. So I will direct you to the discussion of the specific five focus areas. So let me toggle to the right location on the screen first. So again, the mixed use, the mixed use application in Lake Forest is applied only within the five focus areas identified for further study. So again, the five areas include the location along El Toro Road, generally between the freeway and north, just north of the parcels of the arbors, along Lake Forest Drive, really closest to the Irvine Spectrum, in your Foothill Ranch Town Center area, the area directly around your new Civic Center, and in the Light Industrial Rare Corridor, also generally along El Toro Road. The intent was really to recognize that although the region and Lake Forest are expected to grow and in response to the community's desire to have more energetic, lively activity centers where people can come together and live and work in proximity, we wanted to make sure that we held true to that first objective, which was to really maintain, preserve, and enhance our existing residential areas. So these five focus areas are the only areas where the mixed use application designation is applied, and even then, in very strategic and limited areas. So as we look through those five areas, Lake Forest Drive includes a large area for mixed-use 43, which allows up to 43 deuse an acre, along with mixed-use office. El Toro Road kind of has a stepping stone mixed-use approach where the most dense and intense uses are located nearest the freeway, kind of stepped down in density and intensity as you work north along El Toro, focusing some mixed use in terms of both urban, industrial, and commercial residential configurations in the... urban, industrial, and commercial residential configurations in the new windows or front door to your civic center. Again, Foothill Ranch Town Center also has a similar tiered approach, just like El Toro, where really the most dense and intense mixed use sixty occurs kind of at the core of that, of that center, and then steps out as you go around and outside of that core. And then the urban industrial forty-three, which is the more intense urban industrial mixture of uses in the rail corridor, light industrial area, really to incentivize change in an area that hasn't seen change in over eighty years. So, outside of these focus areas, no additional mixed use was applied, really intending to keep with that primary objective of maintaining your existing residential neighborhoods.
Do you see that mixed use designation as a place where we could deal with some of the affordable housing issues that these people have brought up tonight? Do you see that as a possibility?
Yes, absolutely. So one of the ways that the city has the ability to think about providing more attainable or affordable housing is at levels of densities and intensities that really encourage that kind of multifamily or mixed use format. So, the benchmark plan does propose an increase in the amount of units at those higher densities and intensities than your current plan would allow, and these locations would be the primary opportunity to address your RENA requirements for not only this cycle, that will, again, begin within the next year, but we think, you know, provide you an opportunity to address future, future allocations within the upcoming cycles as well.
So basically, with the housing element situation with RENA, in eight years, the SCAG could come back and increase the requirement that they're looking for, right?
The city receives a new allocation every eight years. So we have received your draft allocation, again, of that approximately thirty-two hundred units for the planning period of two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-nine. But in two thousand twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-eight, you'll get your next eight-year allocation. So you'll have what you've accomplished and accommodated this time around, and then you'll get a new allocation eight years from now, and then eight years from then.
Yeah, one other issue on retail, and we talked a little bit about this the other It appears that retail has changed dramatically in the last ten years, and the mixture of retail seems to have changed dramatically. The big box stores seem to not want to occupy nearly as much space. Do you see that trend continuing as we go forward? And how did you address that in the plan?
So, yeah, the, so the first thing I'll note is, we had economic subconsultants as part of our project team who are very instrumental in helping craft the land use plan. And I'll also qualify this with my crystal ball is notoriously cloudy and bad, so I'll say all this with a, with a grain of salt, and that I can't predict the future. But with that said, having done this for a number of years, is, yes, I think we do see the nature of retail continuing to change. There will be certain categories of big box stores that aren't going to be as easily supplanted by the Amazons of the world. People will continue to want to walk into Costco or walk into Home Depot. When you needed a two-by-four and a box of nails, you usually need it now. But with that said, we're seeing a lot of other department-type stores go by the wayside being replaced through online retail. What we are seeing, though, is a notable uptick and cha- an increase in what we're calling experiential retail, and where the, you know, I'll give examples where you'll now find restaurants inside your Barnes &amp; Noble stores, or you'll have theaters that serve adult beverages. And so the, the idea of retail is trying to grab customers and still get them into brick-and-mortar storefronts, but we're seeing a shift and change. While they're not certainly analogous one with the other, you know, as we see the fall of department stores, we're seeing the rise of microbrews and beer gardens, and it's just another opportunity for retail to take another shape and form. So what we're generally advising our client cities right now is to not do away with your zoning and your land use categories for commercial, but provide a lot of flexibility, so as new emerging retail types come forward, you have available land, you have flexible zoning in place, and you can be accommodating to the next wave of retail where we don't understand all of the nuances of exactly how it'll look and function, but we're preparing ourselves with flexibility.
Yeah, that was kind of interesting, because I look at Irvine Spectrum, it's kind of an example of what we see happening there. I thought it was quite interesting. What started out as a regional shopping center now has a large string of high-rise commercial buildings, and it's got a huge number of apartments around it now, and things like that, which appear to be almost like a mixed-use type of environment. And their retail has changed almost completely in the last five years. I mean, it's almost unrecognizable now for what it was five years ago. And I guess that's the type of thing I, I kind of saw in our plan, that it looks like in order for us, as a city, to stay competitive with that type of a neighbor, we'd have to look at that same type of thing, and have something in the plan that would encourage developers to do the same thing here. Does that work in with your plan?
Yes, exactly. And so, again, the private market and private property owners will continue to make decisions in their own best interest, and they'll be pursuing opportunities that reflect the vision defined in your general plan. So, again, your mixed use opportunity areas continue allow, to allow for commercial development at levels that you are experiencing today. So it certainly does not indicate to the development community that you must abandon retail and insert, you know, new development type X. What it says is that, as, as Ben was alluding to, as the nature of retail or commercial changes, we're taking a proactive stance in the way we want to respond to that, to create these places to be positive, successful economic development centers, and it may involve the mixture of different types of uses that Lake Forest hadn't previously allowed in this type of format. So your mixed use designations allow for retail and commercial uses to occur side-by-side against retail and other residential uses, just like the pattern you described in Irvine Spectrum, where it's not necessarily that all the uses are stacked on top of each other, and the building is really tall. The uses might be just next door to each other, and people are walking from one use to the other. So your designations continue to support that type of environment. And we're seeing that certainly at different densities and intensities around the county. The Orange Block is looking at allowing for a mixture of uses there. Westminster Mall also allowing to diversify the uses there in order to really complement both types of uses. Residents are preferring to live in places where they have easy access to jobs and, and shopping opportunities, and retail is ultimately more successful when it has people closer by. So being able to bring those uses closer together in Lake Forest is one of the key points of those designations.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have. Anybody else have any question? Can we have a motion to approve the staff recommendation?
From who?
I'll second with the closing of the public hearing.
That's right.
And close public hearing.
Let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Commissioner Barajas absent.
Thank you very much for a very wonderful presentation. I realize it was long, but you did it very well.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your time tonight.
Okay. Okay, I think we're now, we're down to?
Director comments.
Director comments.
I just have a very exciting comment. On Friday, the thirteenth, we are packing our boxes, and City Hall is moving to our new location. It's spectacular and beautiful. On Tuesday, the seventeenth of December, we'll have a ribbon-cutting ceremony. You'll, you probably have all received your invitations, so we hope you will be there. If you stop by the administration building, I'm sure we can sneak you in. We can take a look at the new building and safety counter area, and I think you'll be really impressed with the just absolute beauty of the facility. Our next Planning Commission meeting, we had set aside a date for a special meeting, I believe, on the eighteenth of December, but since we were, we took action on this item this evening, we won't be meeting again until our meeting in January. And at that time, we will be holding our meeting in the new city council chambers. And just to let you know, we're no longer having any food in the council chambers, so this is the final Planning Commission snack.
City Attorney, do you have any comments tonight?
Nothing, except for happy holidays.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the commission members. Commissioner Armando?
No comment. Thank you.
Commissioner Fuentes?
Let me just say, to thank you for your presentation. It was very nice, and then the meeting the other day was very informative and answered a lot of questions and stuff, so thank you.
Commissioner Fuentes?
So, thank you as well, and I, special thank you to Amanda. I mean, she's giving birth to bring more people to Lake Forest, and we wish her well, and as our city attorney, doing the same thing. So thank you, ladies, for bringing more good residents to Lake Forest. I know you're all moving here with that general plan, because it, it's, it's pretty fabulous. And happy holidays, and Merry Christmas.
Vice Chair Carter?
Yeah, once again, I'd just like to reiterate, the presentation and the way this was put together, I think was exceptional. I could see that you guys put an exorbitant amount of time into it. I don't think there's anything there that wasn't, you know, answered. It did point out some issues that we are going to be confronting or need to confront in the near future. The commission, over the next ten to fifteen years, will be challenged with some nuances that we haven't had in the past, some of them involving infrastructure items that may have to be considered in order to make some of this stuff work in certain areas. But I found this to be a very valuable tool that was put together, and I think it'll serve the community well. And I'd like to wish everyone Merry Christmas. And for the two of you, congratulations. I didn't even know about the city attorney. She's been hiding it very well. But I believe we will be seeing you at the next meeting. You're not that close, but congratulations, you're, you're about done, I know. So, anyway, have a happy holiday, everyone.
Thank you. I would like to concur. I'm very impressed with the depth of your work, and the, you know, the completeness of it, and the clarity of it. And it was just very well put together all the way around. Really grateful for the effort that the staff has put in in working with you. I know from, from talking with the staff and then talking with you, that there's been a real close relationship there. It looks like it's worked very well, and I, I think we were very lucky to have you as a consultants on this project, so. And again, congratulations to the staff for picking the right company. So you get credit for that one. And again, I wish everybody Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and we'll look forward to seeing everybody in January. With that, we'll adjourn.
All right.